We're making some good deals. Anyway, I'd like to introduce Chairman, Vice Chairman of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, Hemi James, is going to do our invocation tonight. Thanks for coming all this way. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members for continuing to extend that hand out to the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Not only do we respect it as a fellow governmental agency, but the continued friendship that you've proved and the courage that you've shown in some of the tough decisions that you've made that have not only worked on behalf of the tribe, but all of us here in this region. And I thank you for the opportunity to come up here. It's an honor to stand before you. Grandfather, we thank you for this beautiful land, this beautiful country that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to have another day here, this blessing that you've given us of life as beings with such a glorious background and glorious land, beautiful water that you've given us. We thank you for that. We humbly hope that we can prove ourselves worthy to be given this blessing of life here on this planet. To the spirit of this beautiful lake that sits out in front of us, we thank you for continuing to provide life for us. Not only life for us as human beings, but all the life that we share in this country. The humility that it shows of your continued battle against us at times as human beings, not showing you that respect, but you continue to provide life for us. We hope that your spirit will touch our hearts and let us understand what that humility really means. To our old ones that came before us, we ask as leaders and as community members, we ask for that strength and that courage to put forth what we were tasked to do, not only represent our fellow human beings, but represent this land, all the life that we share, the waters that flow, the trees, this beautiful sun that we got to see today, and as the weather turns, the sleeping and the transition to another year. I ask prayers for not only this governmental body, but the tribal body that we can continue to grow this relationship, this friendship that we can use to the benefit of all that come to this glorious land in hopes of living off of its bounty, enjoying it on a recreational, enjoying the fishing, enjoying the skiing, enjoying just being in such a beautiful place. We ask that you touch each individual's heart, that we can know that as human beings, we have a responsibility to interact with all life on this land and with each other. To all the spirits, we ask that you look upon this country, the United States, as we have a difficult day today, no matter what happens, we ask that you go into each individual's heart and know that we have that certain responsibility to each other and to our loved ones that we will never meet 10 generations down the road. We ask that you continue to bless us here in North Idaho, that we can continue to be what was intended when we were created and placed here. L'Amlech. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Council.
Kenny, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again, Harry. Any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, it's public comment time. Folks, if you are going to have anything to say, there's a sign-up sheet back there and we'll work our way through it.
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you Mary?
I am.
Well, welcome, Mary.
Is this on? I can't, it's hard for me to, you can hear me. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, all of you here, for your public service. I appreciate you and all the work that you do on City Council. My name is Mary Merrill. I live in Oak Crest Manufactured Home Park and I often will go walking or walk side-by-side with my husband, who is in a scooter and has a service dog. He's a disabled Vietnam vet. So my concern tonight is a request for a bike trail, a sidewalk, a street or street shoulder request. The main connector street on Dalton between Ramsey and Highway 95 has no shoulders. I already talked about my husband and the scooter. This portion of the road is very dangerous. I've also seen school kids walking down the road and mothers with strollers. It is always very scary. Please install some sort of walkway, sidewalk, bike lane so that we can travel between Dalton, on Dalton, between Ramsey and Highway 95 safely. I suggest the south side of Dalton for this improvement. Excuse me. And I just wanted to let you know that I first contacted Monte McCully and he recommended that I come and talk to you all. So that's another reason why I'm here tonight. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Mary. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, what happens from here? Is it sent to staff to review the request?
Probably. Troy, you going to carry that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Lisa D.
Good evening, council members.
Pardon me while I look at the clock.
I've never done this before. So, good evening, council members. I live near 14th and East Coeur d'Alene Avenue and in recent years, there has been a serious uptick in many of our vintage homes being knocked down and a lot of really large contemporary humongous homes being built. And with that has come some serious light trespass issues. And many times when you're going to be walking or riding through various neighborhoods with some of the new construction, they have clear glass fixtures with pretty high-intensity LED bulbs and you kind of have to shield your eyes. Well, I've been dealing with, and many people on my side of a street in the neighborhood, there was a little house that got razed at 1313 East Lakeside and a very, very large home was built. Our issue is in the back, it's a very tall angular awning with a lot of recessed lighting. It's so high, it literally blasts your bedroom, the living room, your yard, your front yard, your front living, everything for all of us on that side. So we've attempted to deal with the woman who built the house and she's pretty reluctant to do much of anything except tell us that she's broke after building this house and the next owner will have to take care of it. She actually listed the home many, many months ago for 1.5 million, which is more than three times what the average home in that neighborhood goes for. It has not sold yet. She's got a new Realtor and lowered the price to 1.3. So we've been trying to deal with the Realtor and he is not getting anywhere with her either. So what we discovered surprisingly is that while we have a commercial light trespass ordinance, there is not one for residential. So we're wondering if there's any way to get the ball rolling and maybe make that happen because it kind of, pardon my French, but it really sucks when you're in your home at night and you have to raise your blinds and play your curtains instead of seeing the sunset or the stars or the trees or the occasional downtown fireworks. I mean, a lot of us leave our windows open all the time, so this has been really sucky. So anyway, we were just trying to get an idea of what we could do from our side since we're not getting any help from her to eventually get this to be an ordinance. I understand a lot of people have talked to code compliance, but because there is no ordinance, there were no reports taken. So we're all just kind of like, eh, what do we do?
That's a good one.
That's basically it. And Councilmember Gookin, thank you so much for your advice. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Can I respond a little, Woody?
Respond?
Could I respond a little?
Oh, respond.
You know, a year or so ago, we do have a person that came to us with the Dark Skies Initiative and actually you might notice in the press, actually they're putting more articles in about that. And it was my understanding with Hillary is that we, they are looking at some different ordinances for dark skies. And this is one of the things, those light bleeds and all of that. So I think it is something that's, I mean, on the, one, it's on the radar, two, I think we're all very, I mean, that sounds like very real concern and there's got to be a way to meet in the middle. And also, I would just say, speaking of lighting, and it's probably to my, one of the friends up in the booth, but usually we have a little light on that side so people can see. But, okay, thanks. Mr. Gookin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did email Lisa back and forth and I've looked up in Haley, Idaho, they have a light trespass ordinance. I sent her a copy. I gave a copy to Hillary. Of course, I can't tell Hillary to do anything. Only us can tell Hillary to do something. But I did give her a heads up and say, this might be something that council will be interested in pursuing because, talked to the chief or emailed the chief and he said that while code enforcement does take these complaints, there's no, they don't document it because there's no ordinance, there's no enforcement. So they get complaints about light trespass. There's really nothing we can do. It is an issue. It has come up before. People have contacted me about it, so I think it's something we might want to look into.
There is a, an ordinance, 1707130, that prohibits intense glare from lighting. It goes beyond, nope, it's for all zoning districts. And we've dealt with this, we dealt with this with the law firm on
That's right.
Fourth Street and got them to turn down their lights or turn them off after a certain time, so I can check with code enforcement.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Forthing Gordon. Are we good with that, you guys?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Hopefully we can get something done. Don't hold your breath now, it takes a while.
Everybody.
All right. Hey, Gene Jams from the Coeur d'Alene Tribes like to talk? Signed up for it? Nope. All right. Anybody else want to make some public comments? All right. Hearing none, we're going to move on. Leaf Fest, Justin from the Streets Department's going to tell us some story about those leaves that he wants to fall down this next week, right?
They are falling too.
Not fast enough.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to host to you the very popular program known as Leaf Pickup for This year's program will start on Tuesday, November 12th at approximately 7:00 a.m. Crews will be focusing on the Fort Grounds area, south of Sherman and heading north from there until the city is completed. Approximately takes roughly two weeks or so, weather-dependent. I would like to take this time to point out that even though this is a Street Department program, it would not be possible without support from many other city teams, so I'd like to say thank you to the Parks Department, Water and Wastewater Department, and Drainage Utility for their ongoing support. It greatly is appreciated. We've been advertising for several weeks now, information on the start date and also some pointers on when and where to put your leaves and needles. It is available in the Coeur d'Alene Press, the Nicholsworth, the City Utility Bill, and online on the city's website, you can find some information for all that stuff. Currently, we have, you may have noticed them around town, there's six reader boards deployed throughout the city in strategic locations to help inform the public of the start date. These reader boards are then moved throughout the city during leaf pickup by the ground crews to notify neighborhoods of the arrival and also to help us with heavily congested areas. It helps get the parked cars off the roads and stuff. We've been doing this for about four to five years now. It's really, really helped us. So we continue to do that and I think it helps the citizens get their leaves out in a timely fashion also. All this week, the crew's been prepping trucks and equipment. There's a lot of manpower that goes into this program to get them all in working order. You'll notice the increased size of the sideboards on there. That's to increase hauling capability and also keeps the leaves from spreading on the roadway as much as possible.
Glass light function.
We also do a safety training and a simulated refresher course for loading trucks in intersections and backing safely. This year, we'll be hauling and processing the leaves at the Street Department campus again. Several years ago, we built this little facility there just for this purpose. The slide right here shows about two hours of hauling on the first day last year, so you can imagine after four or five days before we start grinding, that pile is massive. Through a greatly appreciated partnership with the county, we're going to be hauling the leaves again this year to the airport property and processing them by spreading them out with this machine right here and dissing them into the soil. This is the largest rental spreader we can find in the area. It can actually hold about half of a transfer truck, so two loads of nap will spread a whole truck. It's needed to stay ahead of the grinding operation so they don't get backed up. Last year, we did train a new operator. I'm hoping this year that he can come out and help us out again and see if we can put some of his skills to use there. Just take a quick moment to talk about the sweeper operation. They are the final piece of equipment in the program. They give everything that clean finished look that we strive for, get all the catch basins opened back up all the way. The problem with them, freezing temperatures and inclement weather slows them down even more. So we do have, we're going to have some cold temperatures next week. Unfortunately, after a couple of days, they will fall behind the guys picking up. So they may be a day behind the pickup crew, so just be patient. We will get to your street and sweep it. We will not miss it. Now, this next slide is just a short informational video I'd like to share with you. Some of you probably have seen it, some of you may have not. Anybody watching this, it does a great job of covering many of the common questions. So just that real quick.
Coeur d'Alene is one of the few cities in the country that annually comes through neighborhoods and collects leaves and pine needles. We do this for a few reasons. Not only is this a popular program, but it helps to keep an otherwise damaging nutrient load out of our lake. The city conducts this leaf pickup program, known as Leaf Fest, to collect not only the leaves that fall in the street, but the ones that fall in your yard. The goal is to keep the nutrients out of the lake and the leaves out of the landfill. The Street Department has a huge job ahead of them, so we ask for your cooperation. They'll be picking up over 2,000 tons of leaves, requiring over 800 truckloads to be hauled away. 100% of the leaves, over 2.5 million pounds, are mulched for reuse as ground cover rather than going into the landfill. Our Street Maintenance Department will begin the annual leaf pickup on November 12th, starting in the south end of the city and working northward until we are finished on or near December 6th. Since leaves can plug catch basins and storm drains, we ask that you rake leaves at least one foot away from the curb. You can start raking your leaves into the street now. Here's a quick list of reminders to help this year's Leaf Fest progress smoothly and on schedule. Please move cars and other vehicles off the street during leaf pickup. Keep leaves about one foot from the curb to allow stormwater to flow freely. Be aware of leaf removal vehicles traveling through your neighborhood and please keep a safe distance away from this equipment. Recognize that this is a tough job to complete in a short period of time, between when the leaves fall and the snow flies, so be patient of traffic slowdowns. Please understand the Leaf Fest trucks are exempt from covering their loads, so debris may be flying from them, so allow extra space when following them. Street sweepers will follow the trucks to remove the remaining leaves. And please don't place bagged leaves in the street. Mix branches, garden trimmings, or other debris with the leaves. Or miss the deadline, as we only have time for one pass in each neighborhood. Please do not put any leaves into the street after we have completed your neighborhood. If you have questions or would like additional information and benefits of Leaf Fest, go to cdaid.org/leaf. To view a map only with pickup information, please go to maps.cdaid.org/leaf. Or you can call the Street Maintenance Information Line at 208-769-2235. Let's have a great, safe Leaf Fest this year.
With that, I'll stand for any questions you guys might have.
You make it look so easy. It almost looks like it's fun.
It is fun, actually.
Any questions, you guys? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It did mention in the video the fact that the trucks are not going to be covered. Don't we normally waive that rule? Have we done that already?
We have.
Yes, we have.
Oh, we have? Okay. Because, all right, good. Well, you're good to go.
Kenny, got any questions?
No, we've seen this a while. It's a great thing. My only fear is when they put them in there after you're done and then you get the phone call and get yelled at for doing a good job, so hopefully they watched the video.
That's all we can hope for.
Thanks, Justin. Appreciate it. You guys have to get up early and stay late, right?
Right.
The boys are all home, done from camping and hunting, right? All right. Thanks again. All right, it's time for council announcements. Anybody got some good stories to tell? English doesn't have a story? Come on, Dan.
I got one.
All right, Dan.
I did want to remind everyone that Monday is Veterans Day and there will be a celebration at Veterans Memorial Park, which is downtown Coeur d'Alene in McEwen Field, at 11:00 a.m. And I have been asked to invite all of us to show up there. And if you do, make sure you let the emcee know so that we can be introduced. And he asked me to say that, so.
I said it. I'm done.
I accept it already.
Just a quick update for council. On the housing issues front, we're having that third annual planning and growth workshop on Thursday night. And I'm really pleased to share that every jurisdiction in the county has representatives there. We have a full house and a two-hour agenda, so I'll be getting information back out to you all on what some of the results are, what some of the new things moving forward that are helping us address our attainable housing issues.
Nice. You guys are good. Moving on, I have some committee appointments, if I could be so bold. Charlotte Drew Rocks and Chuck Etheridge to the Arts Commission. Ruth Pratt to the Library Board. Council Gabriel, I found a job for you. You're going to be on the second meeting of Public Works and General Services Subcommittee and the TV Committee. It's a morning thing. You'll learn about how they do all this. It'll be fun.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Councilman English, you're going to the Library Board? Try and be nice.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, should be interesting. You'll learn some new stuff. Councilman Gookin, you're going to be the chair for the second Public Work General Services meeting. And all the, everything else is going to stay the same, you guys. I haven't given much thought to this stuff and if you have some things you want to do, let me know, okay? So in the meantime, I look for a motion to support that if I, if you could.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to appoint Charlotte.
It's Dutrio.
Thank you. Charlotte Dutrio and Chuck Etheridge to the Arts Commission, Ruth Pratt to the Library Board of Trustees, and the following council assignments. Councilman Gabriel to the Second General Services Public Works Subcommittee and CDATV Committee. Councilman English to Library Board of Trustees and Councilman Gookin to the Chair of the Second General Services Public Works Subcommittee.
Second.
It's being moved in second discussion. Thoughts? Comments? Hearing none? All those, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Gookin.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
I need a motion for consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution Number 24-089. Second.
Being moved in second discussion. Questions? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Gookin.
Yep.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Thank you. Other business, Mike Anderson from the wastewater treatment plant. I noticed the compost had vanilla flavoring smell today. I'm going to give you a compliment on that.
It has yet to be determined if it's actually a flavoring, but it certainly is scented that way.
Scented. We appreciate those who live out that way.
We'll send out the new guy to find out what it tastes like.
All right.
Tonight, I present to you, oh, I'm sorry, give me a moment, an agreement for wastewater service to be provided to 2881 East Murphy Road. On our map here that I've got in front of you, in front of me, there it is, in front of you, you can see the city boundaries are in green here and to the south of here is the city. And this is outside the city. The property in question, 2881 East Murphy Road, I've outlined in red. So my intent here was to show you sort of where it lies in relation and obviously it lies abutting to, but outside of city limits. And the reason that I'm here is because wastewater policy 718, as you'll know, does not allow us to provide wastewater service outside of the city, wherein this property clearly is. However, there is an exception, and that exception lies with you. Council may approve to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, what it says here, may approve that we provide wastewater outside of the city. And we have done so in a select few instances. The city of Fernan Lake Village, for example, is not in within the city of Coeur d'Alene, but we do provide them wastewater services. So the issue with this property is that it cannot annex into the city at this time. The reason for that is the fire department cannot service this property. There is just not enough water pressure over there. The county can serve them right now because they have a tanker for their fire truck, but the city does not have that capacity. On the map now here, I zoomed in a little bit and you can see this is the property again, or hopefully that outline came out all right, but it's outlined here in red. And over here, this is the hill that runs down towards French Gulch Road. Over here is the water service. I have asked the water department and they do not have any plans for extending water over to this property at this time. However, wastewater, Mike got a little hacked off, sorry about that. That's my fault on my presentation. But the important part is here, wastewater runs this direction to a manhole right here, that green dot is a manhole, then runs down, and so we're outside the city and we're running what we call cross-country at this point, to French Gulch Road and then back over into the city. So there is a wastewater line nearby. And the property would likely will have them, if approved, connect into that manhole right there. In order to do this, there is a special agreement between us and the property owner, which was provided to in your packet, but just some highlights of it is that the property is limited to a single-family home. We'll have no idea how much water they're using. On a commercial property, we build wastewater based on how much, how many thousands of gallons have been used. But if you recall, on residential properties, it's a fixed rate. So we just find what the average is across the city and everybody pays what that average is. So as far as monthly fees, it would fit right in with our current system. We don't need to know how much water they're using. Another highlight in the agreement is that the property must annex when those requirements are met, which at the moment, like I said, is a fire service. So when fire can provide them service, they would be required to annex into the city. And also critically, the property, this runs with the land. So if the Roy's would decide to sell the property, this is linked to the, to the property. So the next owner would also have that same requirement to annex into the city. And with that, I would take any questions that you may have of me and the Roy's are here as well. So if you'd like to ask them any questions that maybe I can't answer.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. So we get some lights on here, we'll talk to our council. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Gookin?
No, I was just, I was just adjusting from the light, but I think, I don't know how long the Roy's can hold it, but I think we should move ahead.
Hmm.
I'm sorry. That took me a good minute.
Anybody else?
Mike, you have any concerns about more people up there? Mike, do you have any concerns about more people if they're wanting to hook into the sewer? Is there anybody else close that this might affect?
On the opposite side of, we have been in communication, let me zoom out to the bigger map again. Barely pictured here. There is several properties up on a hill here that have a failing well field. We have been in communications with them about providing a similar service. And that's still in the works. But as far as immediately adjacent to this property, these, I don't think there's any houses here at the moment, and I haven't gone cross-country looking. But there is no houses nearby. As well, up north here, where there is some failing drain fields, or one single community drain field that's failing. City water is up there. So for what it's worth, there is city water up there.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There isn't anyone from the fire department here, but we have a former chief. Kenny, what's your prediction on fire services?
I will ask Chief DeRider to answer that question.
Oh, he's here! Oh, I didn't even see him.
He was hiding. Want to come up, chief? Why'd you set him up, didn't you?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, thank you, Kenny, for the good eye.
Yes, thank you.
Did you understand the question?
Can you repeat that again?
Well, the prediction on fire coverage in the near future.
Well, as Mike had pointed out, we don't have any tenders. And a tender is what carries the water to the scene. We don't have the need for them in the city because of hydrants. So once the water department would have plans to put hydrants in there, I would assume then we could look at doing fire coverage.
Okay, so it's part of a long-term.
Yes.
Strategic plan. Thanks for coming up. Sorry I didn't see you back there.
As far as strategic plans, that did remind me, it does lie within the city's area of impact.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
No worries. Mike, in here, it says that the property owner will pay for the connection fees and then for the monthly sewer. So if this was a new property being built, they would have to pay impact fees. Are those something that's considered here, or just the actual physical cost of connection?
No, so yeah, that was intended. They'll obviously have to pay the, any construction costs, but they will be paying that, what we call the cap fee, or the impact fee, the $6,665 that every residential family has to pay, and then, of course, the monthly fee.
Thanks. And then further to that question that I think is to the north of there with the failing multi-family septic system, is if that ends up being connected, is the capacity for the sewer there for both of those plus all of these coming in off of French Gulch?
Yes, we did have a bottleneck that it still probably could have handled, but we've since removed that bottleneck. We did that last year. That project in Mullen was a bottleneck, but that's been removed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just thanks. I would just say that, you know, we've been very reluctant to give these exemptions. And, you know, when I first kind of heard and read, you know, I guess my alert was up a bit. But this, on the other hand, this is exactly why you've got kind of a common sense exemption in there for now. I mean, they're going to pay their cap fee, they're going to be part of it down the road. If something comes along and it makes sense to, you know, join some others and annex. But for now, it's also, I mean, we do want to protect, you know, the environment and, you know, appreciated the opening prayer from the tribe. And I mean, just respecting, you know, the land and all of that. So I think this, you know, this is one that I have no trouble with supporting this exemption within those boundaries.
To your point, Councilman English, the requirements for a septic system over there are, I'm not entirely familiar with them, and you can feel free to ask the Roy's that. But it's, it would require a multi-stage treatment septic system. And as you say, it might not have been as good for the environment as putting it to the treatment plant, as it would go now.
You know, I think something I've watched over the years is that I think we try and protect our water and sewer departments. They're part of the city. So these folks are not in the city. They're using one of the bonuses that comes with a city, but they're not paying city taxes. So that's why sometimes we kind of juggle with it going, is this the best thing? And then we look at it, probably some things will develop there in the next 10 or 15 years, and that'll bring that water line over. Because that's an expensive move to bring the water to them, right?
Right, and we're sensitive to that as well, as far as the not being part of the city. It's why we have that requirement to annex as soon as you can. It's not like a choice. Oh, I think I can, no, as soon as you can, thou shalt.
Thou shalt.
Any other questions? So look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would approve Resolution Number 24-090, approving an agreement with Christina Roy for wastewater service outside the city limits for the property located at 2881 East Murphy Road.
Second. It's being moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? Thoughts? Ooh-ha. Roll call, please.
Gookin.
Oh, yes.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Thank you all. Moving ahead. Adam, you're up. Welcome. Going to talk about tearing some stuff down. I've seen you on the roof there a lot, buddy. Fixing, putzing.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here tonight seeking approval to demolish the old museum building located at 115 Northwest Boulevard. That building has been, was built sometime in the 60s. The city acquired it in the late 70s, early 80s, where I believe it's been the museum for the last 40 years or so. In the last few years, we've been struggling with roof leaks and roof failure at this building. These photos show the southeast side of the building, and the slide on the right shows where the roof deck is splitting, allowing a lot of water into the building. With that water spilling in there over the last couple of years, we've also had the building tested for mold early last spring. Those test results showed high levels of mold in the building, which deemed it unfit for occupancy. Here is our second year of tarping over that side of the roof to try and minimize the amount of water getting into the building. And on the inside, this is, the other week, and the museum has partially moved out of the building at this point, but this is the row of buckets and whatnot they have to collect the rainwater that's coming in. Along with the roof damage or the roof, need of a roof replacement, mold inside the building, we also had it tested for asbestos. The mastic underneath the carpet and the tile inside the building tested positive for asbestos, so abatement will need to be done as well. The mechanical equipment on the roof is mid-80s, and only handles mechanical cooling, so there's no heat in the building in the winter either. We've reached out to other agencies as well to see if there was any interest in leasing that building, but given its condition, we've had no other interest.
Yeah, I wonder why.
You should be in real estate.
Questions for Adam. Christie.
Mr. Mayor, actually, my question is for Troy. I think that's been a long-term plan because the building was of no use to remove it, and then we'd have the view and vistas. But Troy, will there be any conversation, or do you anticipate conversation, or should it start here maybe, about what we could put there that would also maintain the view? And I was just thinking of an overhead park shelter for citizens to use because so many people gather right there during so many of our events downtown. And I thought, well, maybe a little shade shelter or something. I don't know if there's been any conversation whether just remove this building and move on.
Adam's done everything he can to keep that building habitable. We have worked with North Idaho College that took a look at it and quickly passed on the opportunity to use it for educational purposes. So yes, we have a master plan that goes way back to the Four Corners that in, in the plan, it looked to take access from Independence Point into a drop-off area and tie it back into the museum parking lot. So there is some great opportunities there. As you think about the museum parking lot, there's a topographical change as it slides down into the park, and we've got shrubs in there. So there's some work. But right now, based on budget, I would propose that we take the building down, and with Adam's help, and possibly the street department will come in less than this dollar amount. And the proposal would be to come to fund balance to pay for this. But we'll get it mitigated. We'll help the museum get their furnishings moved to the new location. So this will take a little while, and then we can master plan. So I would suggest that for next year, with parks and with Adam, we have that area green, sprinkle it, and then see what we want to do going forward. And then the view will be protected at that point. And then we look at maybe better ingress, egress, getting folks in and out, or a shelter and things like that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, well, somewhere in the comments, I saw that somebody said, well, there, you know, can't imagine any sentimental value to this, which I take a certain amount of offense because that's where I worked at the COOP, and then it changed to the Senex. And, you know, there's a lot of good memories in that. And we do need, we still need, a police substation down that way. So I mean, to what Christie was saying is, I'm good, you know, but hearing, you know, with special asbestos and all of that, yeah, it makes sense, okay. Take it down, and in the meantime, you know, green it up. But for the longer term, I mean, I really think we ought to keep our eyes on, we really need, you know, a substation somewhere, and that's such a perfect location that could be multi-use for, you know, meeting space and all of that. And so, you know, I guess, given, you know, given those health impacts and all of that, then that makes sense, but not necessarily open vista forever, so. Mr. Gookin.
Thank you. So yeah, I was just going to say to Christie's point that the Four Corners Master Plan has that as an extended parking lot and green space. We also have to keep in mind there is a seawall there that we are required to put into by FEMA. So we can't really reach that or anything to the south. I just, I'd like to see it be open. So it'll be nice to see the green monster gone.
And council member, FEMA is okay with this because we're not going to touch the seawall? We've checked in and asked for forgiveness before we actually did it, and that worked really well because we got their permission to go forward, so great point.
Sweet, thank you.
That was my question.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Look for a motion, please.
I want to make the motion to approve the demolition of the old building at 115 Northwest Boulevard. Tear it down.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Should we burn it? Can we have a festival or something?
Let's bring up Chief DeRider and ask him about it.
If we can burn that brick, that'll be.
Burn the brick.
We'll reach out to Fire and Media for training purposes before that building goes away. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. A roll call, please.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Gookin.
Yep.
Okay, well, well, we're moving into a legislative public hearing. Dennis Grant's going to be representing the engineering project. I don't have anybody signed up to speak to this. Anything anybody wants to, you're supposed to sign up or come on up. You get five minutes to talk about it. So with that, I'm going to get the staff report from Dennis.
May I have the booth change the screen?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Wow, it's dark in here, so. A quick thing, I agree with Dan English on the previous. I ran around that building when I was a kid, maybe seven years old. My dad worked there at the COOP Supply, and at Dan English, I worked there too. And anyway, just some memories there. I got my first bicycle down there, so that was kind of cool. Anyway, all right, back to business. The applicant, Hagadon Hospitality Corporation, is requesting the vacation of a portion of Alley Right-Away located north of Sherman. You can see the picture there, north of Sherman, south of Lakeside Avenue, and between First and Second Street. The requested right-of-way was originally dedicated to the, excuse me, city of Coeur d'Alene in the plat of Coeur d'Alene and Kings Edition on July 5th, 1886. Yeah, a long time ago. The purpose of this request is to vacate a portion of Alley Right-Away to build a 15-story hotel, restaurant, and multi-level parking structure on the property surrounding the alley. This project went through the design review process in March of 2024 and received unanimous approval from the Design Review Commission. The project is slated to start in the fall of 2024, beginning with the demolition of the existing structures and facilities on the site. Hi, Kenny.
Hello.
It is anticipated that construction of the building will commence in the spring of 2025 with a two-year construction schedule. The property on each side of the alley is owned by the applicant. They own all sides. There are several existing utilities such as sewer, power, and other franchise utilities that will be contained in an easement as part of the vacation ordinance. This easement would allow unrestricted access to the city utilities in that area. The development review team was informed about this vacation. I sent out 129 certified mailings, received three responses. One was four, and two were neutral, so zero against. You should have all received a letter of the support that Joanne put on your desk there. So if you have any questions on that, you can ask, but it was a letter of support. So the staff recommends that city council should approve the vacation action per Idaho Code 50-1306 and to vacate the property to the applicant Hagadon Hospitality Corporation. Any questions?
Questions, council? Dan? Yes, thanks. I guess I wanted to, and I'm not sure exactly how this ties in, but I guess I just want to get on the record with it. I'm really concerned that we not approve any more cranes downtown that take up, you know, public right-of-way and all of that. And I don't know if that's the, you know, kind of, if that will come back to us or something. But I guess, you know, on one hand, this is normal vacation. We do it all the time. That makes sense. You know, I'm supportive of that. On the other hand, it looks to me like, you know, giving that whole alley and everything else, that I guess for me, I really want to hear that, you know, they're going to be able to make that crane work and keep their stuff on the site. And if they need to move it around and it costs a little more, I guess that's it. But I just, I would really be reluctant to tie up more of our downtown streets for a long period. So, I mean, that's my intent, so. Thank you. Anyone else? Thoughts? Comments?
I just had a point of clarification, but I think Kiki just helped me out. Parcel three on the top corner there. The Hagadon Corporation owns the rectangular piece going vertical, not the horizontal piece. I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, yeah, they own, that was, parcel three was Preannal's property. It was Eclipse's coffee. Now it's Life Coffee. The Hagadon Corporation did purchase that property. And then there's a little parking lot, parcel four, that the Hagadon Corporation owns. So there's some businesses in that square on the corner that are... There we go. This little area right here that is not owned by the Hagadon Corporation, and it doesn't touch the alley right-of-way.
Thank you.
Anything else? So I need to open this to anybody who would like to comment on this. Come on up. I need your name because you didn't fill out the piece of paper.
Mayor McEvers, council member, Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue in the great city of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, representing...
What's your last name, sir?
Ditman, D-I-T-T-M-A-N. Representing the Hagadon Hospitality Corporation and Coeur d'Alene Resort tonight. As Dennis had said, we're here tonight to request vacation of the alley. It's in Block Y of the Coeur d'Alene and Kings Edition, which was dedicated back in the 1800s, as Dennis has said. So it's been there for a while. back in the 1800s, as Dennis has said. So it's been there for a while. Um, here's, here's kind of a zoomed in, uh, shot of it. To answer some of the comments, Councilman English, no, the, the, so we've been through design review, as you know, with the building. The crane is going to be entirely contained within Hagadon property. We're not here tonight to request vacation of the alley because it's necessary for a reduced setback or anything necessary to build the building. It's more of, of we want to control our own destiny situation. And I'll get to that in a minute. I'll show you what, what's going on. So as was discussed, there's, there's really eight parcels in that block. The Hagadon Hospitality Corporation owns everything highlighted in red. So we own all sides, both sides of that alley. There's two parcels there that are up in the corner here that we don't own. Uh, we've contacted both of those owners. There's a letter in your packet or should be a letter in there from, uh, in support from those owners, uh, for vacation of this. This is really to, like I said, to kind of control our own destiny. So this is the site plan that was, again, has been through design review, has been vetted and approved. The main, uh, entrance to the new tower is going to be back here in the alley. So it makes sense for the resort to kind of control that alley so that we're not relying on the city for snow plowing, for maintenance and stuff like that, that we can, we can do that all of ourselves. The yellow building, um, as you guys know, is going to be a parking garage, two-story parking garage for, uh, people in the hotel. The blue area is going to be the new Azul Restaurant. That's part of the hotel. And then the red area obviously is the hotel itself. So everything here is owned by the Hagadon Hospitality. We've got a row of parking here that is owned by them. That will be the, the handicap, the, the ADA parking. Um, this is the, the parcel in question that Councilor Evans was talking about where the coffee shop is. There'll be parking here. There'll be a new dumpster location here that everybody in this block will get to use for a dumpster location and not have to go to the alley. So we think we've solved all of the problems. Uh, on your consent calendar tonight was an easement to the wastewater department because they do have a sewer line that runs through there. So we've solved that problem as well. Uh, so that's really the nuts and bolts of, of what we're trying to do. So I hope I've answered some of your questions. If you have any more, I'll be, be happy to answer them.
Any questions? I think you've, you've kicked it.
Kiki has a question.
Kiki? Sorry.
I know. I gotta get taller.
Put Alien back.
Mr. Ditman, are there, um, to your knowledge, parking leases or any agreements with the adjacent property in this parcel four?
There are not. And we've done a full title search. There are no existing access easements or any kind of parking easements that are, as I said, and I can go back to, to the exhibit, the Hagadon Hospitality Corporation does own all of those parcels on both sides of it, including this little parking area here and the parking here that serves, currently serves the, the Johnson Building.
So the building that they don't own on the corner has no parking?
Not, not back in the alley. No, correct.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ditman. Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, this is totally tangential. So the Azul Restaurant, is that based on barbacoa down in Boise?
I do, I do not have an answer for that. I don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Regan's here. He can answer that maybe if he'd like to, but I don't have an answer for that.
Later.
It'd be fun just to pick on him a little.
Well, you're more than welcome to pick on him if you'd like to bring him up here. Thank you, guys.
He looks like he needs a nap. Welcome. All right. Uh, anybody else want to speak to this? I'm gonna close public comments and get over to you guys.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just, it's now back to us, right?
Yes.
Uh, ju- just a comment that it, you know, it's a contiguous piece of land. It seems like a common sense thing to do. And I don't have any issues with, with the request. And I would, I would make a motion and then there could be more discussion.
All right. I make a motion to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill Number 24-1018, once by title only.
Second.
Discussion, comments, thoughts? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Hi.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Can you read the title, please?
Council Bill Number 24-1018, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating a Portion of Alley Right-Away As Shown on the Final Plaid of Coeur d'Alene and King's Edition, Recorded in Book C of Deeds, Page 144 and 145. Records of Kuna County, Idaho, General Describe as That Portion of the Alley Right-Away Lying Adjacent to Tax Number 4556 and Tax Number 4557 and Lots 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 Between Block Y and the Reserve Block As Shown on the Final Plaid of Coeur d'Alene and King's Edition, Lying in Section 13 Township 15 North Range 4 West, Boise, Meridian City of Coeur d'Alene, Kuna County, Idaho, Repealing All Ordinances and Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing a Severability Clause, and Providing for the Publication of a Summary of Disordinance and Effective Date Hereof.
Joe, you're awesome. I'm telling you, you just read it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to, for council to adopt Council Bill Number 24-1018.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All, roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Hi.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Thanks you all. Go to work. All right, you guys. Randy Adams is gonna talk about a new, uh, financing problem or potential problem. No, no.
Opportunity.
Potential, opportunity. Thank you.
They'll take you out of context.
I have to learn those words. Yes. All right.
You've seen the presentation. Somebody told me there were too many words. Trust me, I'm not gonna read them all. Somebody also said I should put some ducks in and you may see some ducks in this.
We like ducks.
You may see some ducks in this presentation. On September 17th of 2024, the council declared its intent to establish a CPACE program for the city of Coeur d'Alene pursuant to a new Idaho legislative initiative. The next pro- step in that process is tonight. And should the council desire to take it, uh, the next step is to establish the program, to adopt the program guidebook and forms, which contain the terms and requirements for the program. This is a process which is set out by the Enabling Legislation in Title 67, Chapter 38 of the Idaho Code. To review, the CPACE program is entirely voluntary. The city cannot force any developer or lender to participate in it. This is something that they will come to us and ask if, ask us to approve their project for this financing opportunity. The state legislature found that enabling legis- local governments to adopt a CPACE program serves a valid public purpose because it is expected to increase economic development, lower insurance costs, lower a city's disaster and emergency response cost, decrease energy and water costs, and encourage energy and water sustainability. The U.S. Department of Energy, uh, says that a CPACE program is an innovative mechanism for financing energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements on a completely voluntary basis to private property between private parties and private lenders. There are numerous benefits to this type of financing, but of course, it is entirely up to the private property owner to take the initiative to, to seek this kind of financing. Uh, and it's up to the private lenders, uh, to determine if this is a right fit for them. The CPACE program is intended to make financing more available for things such as renewable energy sources, energy efficiency, and water conservation measures, all of which the city is, has been, has shown that it is very interested in in the past. Uh, it's a very flexible program, consist- can assist property owners to do a wide variety of types of projects. So where are CPACE programs already in existence? By the last count, and this is not an election map, uh, there are at least 38 states that uh, have CPACE, uh, enabling legislation, including all of the states in the western United States except for Wyoming and Arizona. Uh, CPACE programs first came on the scene in about 2007. Since then, CPACE financing has been used in over 2,300 projects in, and counting, in 29 states with a value of $7.2 billion. So today is the time for council to hear public comment about the proposed program. Following the comment period, council will have to decide whether to move forward and adopt a CPACE program for Coeur d'Alene, uh, as outlined in the program guidebook. And as far as I know, Idaho, or Coeur d'Alene will be the first such program in Idaho.
Good for it.
Which is sometimes good and sometimes not. There are lenders and developers who are anxious to use this financing mechanism. I expect, uh, applications, if it is passed, to start coming in this week, uh, perhaps. Uh, what will the city get out of this? The city's gonna get a whopping $500 per application and up to $50,000 for a project. They get, we would, uh, be entitled to, uh, 1% of the, uh, value of the development, up to $50,000. I emphasize that no taxpayer funds are, uh, at risk or involved in this program. So how, what does the city do? Our finance director will receive the application, will determine if it meets the requirements of state law and the city program, and sign the necessary documents on behalf of the city. None of these documents creates, well, any liability at all on the part of the city. Then it's up to the developer and the lender to see the project through. The lender will collect loan payments on that loan, which would include the 1% uh, service fee that the city is entitled to charge, and then remit that fee back to us. So we don't have to deal with the money. We don't have to collect it. We don't have to worry about, uh, whether it's being paid on time. Uh, we delegate that to the lender who has all the interest to, to collect on their loan. So in other words, the city spends a little bit of time and gains up to $50,500 per approved loan. So staff is recommending that council approve and establish the CPACE program for the city. I want to emphasize that establishing the program tonight does not commit the city to continuing the program for any particular period of time. If the city is looking at this and for some, something comes up and they don't think it's really a good fit for the city, we can, we can stop the program at any time. Of course, anything that is, has gone through that process up to that point would still continue. But the city does not have to commit to, uh, an infinite period of time to run this program. Uh, so I'm open for questions, uh, if you have any. And, um, Troy is available on the financial end of things to, uh, if you have any of those kind of questions.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor? So long-term on this, there's nothing negative for us?
As far as we can see, there's nothing negative at all. We get money. We spend a little bit of staff time, uh, reviewing an application, but, uh, there really is very little that the city needs to do.
Christie?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we went through this with a lot of detail just a few months ago. Um, since that time, I did have an opportunity to talk to Ginny Gilliam, Chairman of the Economic Development Court. Is that correct? Yeah, she was very excited about the possibility of this program because she's the boots-on-the-ground that are seeing the, um, interest in this. So I think it's a positive thing. I thought it was a couple of months ago. I think it's a positive thing for us and I'll be supporting it.
Yeah. She has said, submitted a letter, I think, that should be in your packets.
Dan? This is probably a question for Troy, but without, you know, trying to do the math in my head, you know, 50,000 is the cap and 50,000, you know, 1% of, I assume is that about a $5 million project? Or how big would it have to be to get that full 50,000?
I think the surprising part is that they're looking at almost $15 million in improvements for the building. So.
For the Marriott.
For the Marriott.
Okay. But I mean, that, if, if it was even a $5 million project, that would, okay. And then beyond that, I mean, we're capped and that seems fair, given all of this. And, um, okay. Well, that, um, yeah. The math sounded good. So. Questions? Kiki?
So I'm assuming we've talked to, um, our finance director and that there is the capacity within that department to take this on as the administrator of a program like this?
Yes, I've passed the program guidebook and the forms. Uh, I gave those to Katie to take a look at. She has reviewed that. I've asked her specifically, uh, if she has any concerns about that, uh, the, the work that needs to be done on these, and she had none.
Mr. Gookin?
Thank you. Uh, Randy or Troy? So in the staff report, it says that, um, the application fee is $500 and that there will be little or no burden to staff. There's a lot of forms in the back. So I assume that the $500 covers the processing of all these forms.
Most of those forms are filled out by the lender and the applicant. Uh, so basically the finance director will look at the application, make sure all the correct boxes are ticked, and then, and then the lender and the app, developer fill out the forms. We would, finance would look at those and sign those if they're in order.
Was there anyone specifically that approached the city to have us initiate, initiate this program?
Uh, I believe that the Marriott Corporation, uh, first approached us and then their, uh, they directed us toward their lender or a lender, um, in Colorado who, who runs that program in Colorado.
Okay. So the lender wasn't Petro's Pace who sent us a-
I think they are going to be that, but, uh, they are going to be a lender. I don't know if it's on the Marriott or another project, but yes.
They sent us a letter telling us they support it. Obviously, that would make sense if they are the lender. Um, so I did some research on this. While I agree, there's, doesn't look like there's anything negative for the city. It looks like there's a lot of obligations that take place on behalf of the person who's taking out the loan, the developer. I have some questions regarding that, uh, on my research as to whether, um, as to how these things impact the CPACE program. So in a CPACE program, does the developer choose the lender or does the city?
The developer would.
So the, and the developer approaches us with that. Um, they enter into an arrangement with the, uh, the person who's generating this loan. The arrangement provides upfront capital at the closing, which will then be secured by a non-accelerating assessment levied on the property by the applicable local government. The local government then assigns the lien and the right to collect the assessment of the CPACE lender, who then has the right to enforce the lien. Is that true in our case?
Yes.
All right. So basically, long story short, they pay more property taxes. And the property taxes are directly assigned to the property and not the owner.
That is correct.
Okay. So-
Paid to the lender, yes.
So what, what the, the effect is, is that, that they're paying more in property taxes and that's the way the loan gets paid back?
It's like, yeah, it's like any other special assessment against a piece of property. It's on top of the property tax they already pay.
And is this CPACE lien, is it superior to the existing mortgage liens?
Um, I believe it is. I believe it is secondary only to the property tax.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, that's what it says right here. Okay, that's interesting.
So on that point, it would almost appear like property taxes because that's the only way for us to do an assessment. So when we are able to collect, it becomes a lien, just like property taxes would. So it would be superior to the first deed of trust.
Outstanding. Um, the non-recourse financing model for CPACE ensures borrower, borrowers are not personally liable for the debt. Is that true? Could someone get a loan and then walk away with the money? Then who's stuck with the bill?
Well, it's a lien against the property. So it's not against the developer.
So theoretically, a developer can get a CPACE loan, split town, and then whoever's stuck with the property, gets stuck with the property. And that's not our problem.
It's not our problem. The lender would then have to foreclose if, if, uh, if payments weren't made.
So we don't get, if that's a fraud or whatever crime that is, that's not on us?
Correct. Correct. There's no liability civilly or criminally.
Okay. Um, so the borrower will use the funds to finance building eco-friendly and energy-efficient improvements, which reduce energy consumption and carbon emissions, blah, blah, blah. That, all that's true. That still holds with this. So they, they can't build it so they can put an extra floor on the building.
Correct. There are only certain improvements. So you, you'll get a loan, they'll, they'll get a loan for the entire structure. They'll, for building the hotel. But there are portions of the structure dealing with windows, heating units, all of those type of things that would fall under that. That would be a separate loan for those environmental, uh, improvements. for those environmental improvements.
Okay. So it's collateralized. You answered that question, and there's that question that was answered, and there's that question. So you guys are doing really good. When it comes to financing a CPACE loan, as far as their finances are concerned, and this is getting into an area that I don't really know, because I have not built large major structures, is this considered part of what's called the capital stack, so that when they get the CPACE loan, it's considered part of their financing so that they can go out and get other loans? Does it play into that at all, or does that really matter to us?
That I can't, I can't answer.
This will need to be disclosed to the other lenders, because it is a piece of their financing model. I would say these lenders are using primarily private money.
Mm-hmm.
I would say if we checked it out, it's probably insurance companies that are putting in a 30-year fixed-rate assumable loan, or banks or credit unions doing that financing. But an insurance company would like that return. So this loan, rough numbers would be a 7% fixed rate. That doesn't adjust, and it can be assumed. So it would be part of the disclosure for all the right reasons.
And regarding the CPACE loan itself, and I don't even know if this is in our court or not, but is there a cap on how much a CPACE loan can be with regards to the loan-to-cost ratio?
Not under the statutes or our policy, no.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
Now you need to build a building.
No, I will never build a building. Thank you very much.
Troy, I have a question along those lines. If it goes sideways, something, it ends up in our tax, is the county separating that? Will they have a piece of this that maybe we have to fight for down the road?
No, we'll be able to certify it as an assessment, just like we do and they do when they're collecting property taxes. So that's the real piece that the local entity plays in this. We can impact what's in this trigger if they choose not to make the payments.
Okay. Any other questions, you guys? I'd like to open public testimony. I have nobody signed up. Anybody wanna chat about this? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close.
Lisa would like to...
Do we need to sign or raise a hand?
Oh, come on up.
Oh, God. I don't know if this ties in with this all together. I was just...
Hang on, hang on. I gotta get your name first. Gotta put you on the new list.
And Sworin.
New list, okay. I'm Lisa from before.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Just a quick question. I'm not sure how this stuff works with this CPACE loan. So basically Hagadon is looking to get a partial loan or the development company building... No, I'm...
It's not Hagadon.
Yeah, this is a different...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a different project.
Well, the other question I had was, I don't know how it refers to this at all, but is there a height limit for downtown? I mean, 15 stories seems really high to me.
I think it's 18, isn't it?
220 feet.
220.
Is it? God, is like downtown and all along McKeon gonna be towers?
We're working on that right now. We actually are working on height restrictions. So it's irrelevant to the hearing, but it answers your question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Have to get her on P and Z. We got your name now. All right, moving on. Counsel, look for your action or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I already said I'm in favor, so I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-091, approving the CPACE program and adopting the program guidebook together with the required forms.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Gookin?
Thank you. He's used to me, so he didn't even have to look up.
He's learning to get it.
Yeah, he's getting the feel. There doesn't seem to be any problem as far as the city's concerned. I don't see any risk to us. But it does make me feel uncomfortable, because it seems like, I don't know, it seems like what we have is you have a bunch of these lenders, like the one who emailed us or sent us the thing that's in the packet, and they created a program, and now they're using it, and they sold it to the legislature. And our legislature is really dumb, and I think they adopted it because they thought it sounded good. I mean, they did the same thing when Airbnb came in here and changed the rules on us. It seems like they created this thing, and now they're going ahead and riding it to town. And so I was trying to figure out, is there anything that can go sideways with this? And there is. This actually, CPACE loans are banned in Los Angeles. And the reason why is because a bunch of unscrupulous actors came in and said, hey, it's a free government loan, and you can get solar power installed for your house, and it's, you know, you don't have to pay anything upfront. And in fact, what it did was it raised all their property taxes, and it's attached to the property. And I don't, that's not what we're talking about here, but it did happen somewhere else. So I think there is a potential, and again, it would not impact the city, but it would impact our citizens. And I'm also uncomfortable with, and I know this isn't even alone with the city, but it just seems like anytime you mix government and private industry and you get this kind of deal-type thing going on, it just, it doesn't sit right with me. So I'm pretty sure council's gonna pass it, but I'm just, I'm still hesitant about it. Maybe it'll turn out to be great. I hope everyone and your attitude and your comments on it are all on point. I don't see any risk for the city, but I do see risks for people who maybe sold this thing and not realizing that it's really gonna jack up their property taxes, and that's something you can't get out from under. So, I mean, you can't declare bankruptcy and have this go away. So that's just my thoughts.
So to summarize that, Gookin's gonna vote no?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing done. Look for a roll call, please.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
No.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.